Good afternoon. My name is Marcy Stromgren and you've tuned into Just the Facts. I have in the studio today Alan Duff, who is a retired Army Major, 23 years of service to our country. He was a city counselor and ICANTI and also a county commissioner and he's written a book called Fixing America's Shattered Politics. Welcome Alan. It's good to have you here today.
Thank you. Great to be here.
Alan, I see that you're going to be speaking before the Legion coming up here called Bringing Americanism Into Action. I'd like you to tell us, tell us and the viewers, what does that mean for us as American citizens?
Well, first of all, I'm very, very excited to be speaking to the American Legion. It's their state annual conference in Wilmer in a few weeks and we are going to be talking about what does it mean to be an American? What does it mean to be a traditional, God-loving, country-loving, family-loving believer that wants to see America prosper and be all the great things that America was founded to be? So, we're going to be talking about what are some of those privileges of being American, being an American that were set up by our forefathers, the way this country was designed. We're really, really unique as a nation, that we are blessed with an opportunity that most people in most countries are not able to be able to enjoy like we are here in America. But, we also have some very serious challenges, including an apathy in the civic arena for people to get involved and keep an eye on their politicians. We have the political problems. And then, we're going to talk about, well, what can we do about it? As a former military service member and then a recovering politician, I believe our military and the people that serve our military are the frontline leaders for taking this country back in a lot of ways. So, I'm really, really looking forward to meeting with the leadership of the American Legion and talking to them about what does it mean to get out the vote? What does it mean to work with local communities to make your community better? And what are all the great things that we can do that are practical for busy people in today's world to be able to have actionable steps that make our nation truly better, starting in their own backyard, in their own local communities?
Well, you know, having home-educated my children, getting a little more history updated after so many years of being out of school, America, the people in America today, I don't think they even understand what you're, what you're going to be telling us about, but I'm going to say this. I was just excited for, I think it was Iran, that they finally got a chance to vote. Now, I could be wrong on the country, but those people had never been allowed to vote before and they finally got an opportunity and they went to the, went to the polls in droves. As an election judge, I have sat, primary elections mostly, through a whole day of waiting for people to come to give us work to do for what we were being paid for. And there was hardly anybody that came to the polls. That is apathy and that's one of the things you mentioned. And then, you get to the general election, if it isn't a presidential election, there's not that big voter turnout either. And that is really sad when we have been, we have been the leading country of freedom in the world. There is no other nation in the world that has had over 200 years of freedom, as we like to think about it. But unfortunately, we have leaders in office today that are controlling things and so we're losing our freedoms bit by bit by bit because we are not there paying attention. So, let's talk about what it, what it means to be an American and what a privilege, we'll start out with privilege, what is the privilege?
Well, we are a great nation and unfortunately, we're under attack right now. So, I think there's a lot of, going back to the initial ground roots of what does it mean to be an American, to answer that question. And it starts with what is the law of our land? And unfortunately, a lot of people do not realize that truly our country is guided by a divinely inspired Constitution that does set up freedom, liberty, and justice for all. Now, the implementation of that, we can argue the semantics of whether it's going good or bad, but the law behind the Constitution is incredible and is set aside, as you said, Marcy, a nation that is really the envy of a lot of the world. But unfortunately, it's in a time right now where it's being challenged in a lot of circles. So, I think we've got to go back to understanding and respecting and embracing the value of what the Constitution does. What the Constitution does is gives us freedom or choice to be independent, to give, to be having the God-given abilities that we have to go out in the marketplace and to serve without political rulership in the way. It boils down to public power versus service. The way most nations go historically is that political dictatorships take over nations and quench the liberty-minded, the joys that people have as individuals to do what they want to do in a free market society. And America has really embraced this for so many, many years and decades, the ability to go out and prosper, the ability to fight for freedom, the ability to do wonderful things. And it's under attack right now. It's under attack by a country that's getting lazy and asking our government to do more and more and more without asking the questions, what really is the role of government? How much should they be doing? Was this what the American forefathers of this country envisioned when they created a country, to have 40% of our GDP, for example, be government? At some point, someone may want to ask the question, is that enough? Do we need to go back to capitalism and entrepreneurship and all the great things that have made America a successful place? I would argue that diversity is something that, is something that we have in America compared to most of the world. The racial issues we have here, I don't want to dismiss them. There are some real issues and I think there's places for having those discussions. But overall, America is a great place for welcoming, welcoming diversity. We're a melting pot of people from all around the world and we have a great core as a nation of great people that want to do the right things. And America is a place for hope. It's a place for hope, for future generations. And one of the reasons why I'm outspoken on this is because that concern for our future is in perilous danger right now as a lot of our freedoms are being taken away by government that's becoming more of a beast and taking away more of those privileges that we have enjoyed for the many, many years. And I don't want to see that. I don't want to see that for my children and I don't want to see it for my grandchildren, that the great country of America, the blessings that it is, are taken away by political elites that think they're smarter than we, the people. They are supposed to serve we, the people, and we, the people are supposed to have a voice in what's going on. But we, the people, need to understand civics 101 and know where our voice can be implemented. And if it's not being heard, we need to speak louder and lend larger groups to get the politicians to be accountable for their actions.
Well, I don't disagree. It seems like we serve the politicians because they, they tell us what their, all these promises they make and then we help them get elected by our, our time and our dollars. So, it seems to me we're serving them and in return, once they're elected, they are not serving us. What is the challenge that, that you mentioned that we need to be looking at?
Well, overall, we are having a serious drought of respect for the law, respect for the principles that this country was founded on, respect for symbolism such as a flag that stands for so much, when you have people with the audacity to kneel before our flag. To me, as a guy who was willing to give his life on the line in our military service and knowing that that flag is what I was fighting for, for someone to show disrespect for that doesn't sit well with me. We live in a country where we are free to express our opinions, but we also live in a country where there are consequences to bad actions. And I think we're starting to see the ramifications for that, that example in the NFL of the financial aspects of that they're hurt when they do things that are contrary to the heartbeat of America. But we're being challenged, the law, you know, the respect for our police officers, the respect for our military frankly is, is in dire straits in some areas. We have a lot of concerns for the fundamental core values of our country, which are basically God, nation, and family. They're all being ripped apart in different ways. And fundamentally, let's just take God for example, we have the rights as Americans to worship as we want. And a lot of times, that's being pulled away by a group that's trying to speak out against that freedom that we have to be able to worship God. It's a freedom that I don't want to lose and I'm afraid that we're going to lose it like most countries have around the world. So, we need to stand up and fight against that nonsense so that we can worship God the way we want, so that we can raise a family the way we want, so that we can be independent, so that we can take care of ourselves. Those challenges to all those basic core identity values of our nation is a, we're in a very serious time where those issues are being dealt with on various, various circles and we need to fight back so that we can have some common decency. What do we see in the media every day? I don't want to beat up too much on the media, but basically what sells in the media is the problems and the arguments. And that's fine to discuss some of that, but we don't talk about the solutions and we don't talk about the consequences for those actions. So, once we start bringing that into the equation, I think America is going to be going back to its roots of being a better country if we go back to what fundamentally brought us here in the first place.
Well, you may not want to beat up on the media, but I can tell you the media in this area is complacent. They are, they are not reporting the truth and the group that we were with earlier, many of them have written letters to the editor and had them rejected for this or that or some other reason, or they choose to put them in the paper many weeks after a particular incident has happened. And so, I think part of our problem, Alan, is the media is controlled by a faction of people and there's no pushback on that. There's no pushback on these people who are doing backroom deals. There's really no pushback. It's apathy. I've seen it too often. The only time they come to a school board meeting or a county board meeting is if the issue is right on their front porch and they want some action taken, so it does, it stops. However, they're not there monitoring and they're not there putting time into what it takes to be free. I go back to the founding fathers when I was teaching my children at home and what they sacrificed. A Worthy Company is an excellent book to read and it talks about all the sacrifice that those men made so that we have what we consider freedom today. So, they, they gave up, some of them their lives, some of them their financial wealth, some of them their families were destroyed and some of them even killed. So, I mean, they sacrificed. They did something to keep the freedom that you and I enjoy today. So, there is consequences of our action, which is apathy for not being willing to get in there and do something about the problem. And I think that leads right into the responsibility aspect of what you want to share.
Well, I think we start with responsibilities by trying to understand what is truth. And as you mentioned, kind of the way the media covers stories, it's really hard to get down to the root of what is driving the train and what is truth and what isn't. I know I've spoken at several college campuses about that regarding the political, the presidential race last year. And a lot of these college students just threw up their hands and they said it was hard to really discern what's factual and what's not and because you have so many opinions driving the media narrative of what's going on in politics, that it gets very, very difficult for folks to understand. One of the things I like to mention is that in a country that is now 40% government, it merits everyone's time to take a couple hours to read a book like Fixing America's Shattered Politics. So, they understand civics 101 and basic fundamentals of what their government should and more importantly, should not be doing because there's a lot of things that they're doing that just keeps growing, growing, and growing and that is not going back to the foundation of America. That's not what they should be doing. So, trying to stop those trains from continuing down that road is a responsibility of we, the people, to get engaged, to understand what is going on in their local politics. And it happens at city councils, county boards, state of Minnesota, United States, wherever political organization, make those politicians accountable. Because we were, we were designed as a nation to be governed by the people. And unfortunately, we've given up that responsibility to a political elite group that thinks they are now running the country and frankly, they are and they're not running it very well. I would say they're running it very, very poorly. So, what, and most people agree, it's the number one issue of concern in the average American to, uh, voice today. And the average American doesn't know what to do about it. They go, it's a problem, but I don't have time, energy, whatever, to deal with it. And the hope of my book, Fixing America's Shattered Politics, is to make it simple and practical for the average person to really understand, what can I do about this mess? What can I do to try to turn things around? We, I think another important part of the responsibilities is to bring respect and honor into the conversations. If you disagree on a political issue, you try to do it with respect and integrity and just try to move on because sometimes we fight about things that really, in the whole scheme of things, may not be that important. But I think we need a dose of respect in the American narrative about what we are as a country, who we are, how do we work together as a country and especially our younger people. As I go around the college campuses once again, I want to give them hope for a better tomorrow. I want to give them hope that they have a nation, that they're going to be leading back towards our roots of independence and liberty and justice for all, that our country was envisioned to be. So, we need people that are going to be boldly supporting the traditional American values and turning this around so we can get out of the political mess that virtually everyone says we're in. And most people will blame it on this party or that party. It's self-serving politicians that really have figured out how to fool us and make us blind to their real motives and doing things that are a disgrace to the public bodies that they represent and hurting the future of our nation. I look at our households. If you make a bad decision in a household, there's consequences towards it. If you don't raise a kid right, things happen. For example, in our business lives, if we make bad decisions, there's consequences towards it that you see in the checkbook. In politics, we have too many bad actions and there's not enough consequences for it. The consequences are being felt by we, the people, who are paying more and more taxes for less and less services. And all we get out of our politicians is blaming the other party or blaming the other person next to them or another level of government. We need to be able to figure out how to get out of this mess that we are in as a nation.
Yes, and yes, consequences. That is a question that I would ask of anybody that's in government right now is what are the consequences to the actions that you have taken? And I'm a part of the Legislative Evaluation Assembly. It's a, it's a group of conservatives that, it's volunteer and they evaluate what's going on in the Minnesota State Legislature and there's no blame to be put on the Democratic side versus the Republican side. They're both responsible for growing big government because of the way they vote on bills and, and the actions that they take. And so, I've known that for years. I've, I've put my life in since my daughter was 11 years old and came to the first township meeting. That was part of her civics class. I've been involved. I've been involved all these years. She's now 37 years old. So, I've put my time into this and I intend to continue to do that, but there's so much apathy out there and it's like, well, you do it and, and you report back to us. And yet, getting involved seems to be not as important as going and playing golf or doing this or that or whatever with their time. And so, I appreciate all that you've put into just doing the research on this book had to be phenomenal and how you're going about now, taking your time to talk to young people and, and other people. It takes a great deal of your time and I think the reward that you have from it is opening up the mind of, of other people so that they can see that they are not helpless. They, they can be effective if they would just spend some time doing that. I've only read four chapters of your book so far. Actually, read two of them twice because sometimes I don't get it. I'm so busy thinking when you're, when I'm reading your book and part of that is because I've been involved, but I can tell the public out there that just those four chapters give you a lot to think about. And so, I would encourage people to certainly get in touch with you and, and see how they can get a book. And you know, I hope that if there's anybody from the VFW, the Legion, the Rotary, Kewanis, College Republicans, ROTC, campus groups, or any other group, what would they have to do, Alan, to get in touch with you and ask you to come and be a speaker at one of their meetings? You have a website. I'd like you to give that now and then, you know, anything else that you feel you want to say about, you're willing to help because you've done the research and so.
My website is majorduff.com, M-A-J-O-R-D-U-F-F.com. And just contact me through there and I'm happy to go around the state. This is a nonpartisan book. I'm happy to speak to whoever wants to listen. One of the things I like to tell people is that I don't tell people who to vote for. I believe in the individual. I believe in people to make up their own mind. I don't, I've seen public offices where you actually have public officials telling the public how bad a certain other elected official is. I think that's a wrong use of that public chair to be using that as a forum for a bully pit for something like that. So, I'm a big believer in the individual, that if they're educated, if they just take time to read this book, which is an easy read, you can read it in two hours. There's summaries at the end of each paragraph, at the end of each chapter that kind of highlight the main meat and potatoes to take home with you. And if they just get involved with this, it's going to make America a better place. It's going to make them more vested in the future of our country. It's going to give them hope that we can turn this around because it really, really is a mess. Probably my biggest fear related to the apathy issue, Marcy, is that the problems with politics are sometimes hard to really put your hands around and grasp and really get and understand how it impacts you in a personal way. Most people understand it when they see their taxes go up 5%, 10%, 15% every year, which is, seems to be commonplace in virtually every political area out there. And let's face it, it's not changing anytime soon unless we start speaking out against it because I don't see much resistance from a lot of elected officials to slow down our curb for more and more government. That's the sad part. We need to basically bring out the red alerts that this cannot continue forever. Our great nation of America needs people to step up and say enough is enough. We cannot run into a, becoming a socialist country like what happens in too many other nations because the end result is not good. We have history to look at to see that it doesn't work in others, in other countries. And we're having efforts to try to make that happen here in America. America was founded with a heartbeat of independence and a love of God and a love of the individual that they can make a difference in the world. And through that foundation of our great country, we've invented some incredible things for the world to enjoy. And I believe America can have many, many, many more centuries of wonderful, great things in front of it. But if we don't turn around this mess soon, we're going to become a country that was past tense and that is really, really sad to see a nation this wonderful in that potential problem area that we could be facing sooner than later.
Well, you know, we only have to look at a few states in America to see a parallel between, I think it was, was it Greece that had a terrible bankruptcy situation? But we have California that's way over indebted. We have Illinois, major political corruption and control in just those two states alone. And there's probably many others. I just, those are the two.
Minnesota.
Well, Minnesota? Oh, well, okay. Maybe we have a few minutes to talk about that one. But over extended budgets and keep going to the public and asking for more and more and more. Well, if Greece could go into bankruptcy, what's to stop, and then these states, what's to stop the rest of America from happening, the same thing happening? I'm sure that in Illinois politics, and I've known that for years, I used to go through the state quite a bit to go over to Michigan, but rioting and killing and looting and whatnot can start happening when people are starving and they have nothing, they have no way to get the, the money from the state that might've been promised to them through the programs they decided they needed to have. They wanted the government to make these government, make things available for them. So, surely, it doesn't take too much thinking to realize that it's happening already here in America. And what happened over in Greece can happen here as a total nation if we keep spending without responsible actions. And now, with all of these disasters going on, the recent fires in California, the tornadoes and hurricanes and whatnot are going on in the southern part of the United States, where is the government going to get that money to veil out these, these states? There isn't an end to the money. The end of the money comes out of your pocketbook, which what happens when it can't come out of your pocketbook anymore. It's just, people have to realize they have to do something in order to stop some of this.
I believe the heartbeat of America is that has a very, very big generous heart. And I think the folks out there are taking advantage of that by asking, hey, elected official, we have this pet project, this pet cause, this type of effort that we think deserves some public funding. And the average politician has a very difficult time saying, no. They basically say, okay, that sounds like something we could probably do and we'll give you a test pilot to do that. And then, they'll give them more money and go, okay, now it works. Now, it's a program that doesn't go away, whether it works or not. And the question I ask is, when does free entitlements or any kind of entitlement like that really provide a long-term benefit at the root of helping somebody else? All the different things that are out there of problems. You take a look at people that win a lottery and what happens is that that free money that they receive ends up being more of a curse than a blessing down the roads when it basically is something that they are not able to put to good use. I believe America wants to help people in need, but I don't think we should be forcing government to help people in need. I believe there's good charities for that. I believe there's great nonprofits. I believe family can come through and help in so many of those difficult situations. We have a lot of great organizations like the American Legion and other that will help out the veterans and all those particular needs that they have. We have a lot of great organizations. I just ask the public to say, how much more can we ask the public to give us when somebody is paying that bill?
Maybe you could just tell us a little bit about the American Legion as far as the veterans go. I know that's a little bit off the subject, Alan, but my husband was in the Vietnam War in the Navy, Naval Reserve. I've always wondered, VFW, American Legion, not to do a contrast here, but tell us a little bit about some of what those organizations do for the vets because all you hear about is the government under the previous administration was not very fair to the vets and so there was a lot of suffering and many deaths too, as that matter. So, how is it that the American Legion and the VFW help out the vets?
Well, they help the veterans out with their service-connected claims. That's one very, very big area. It's a place for camaraderie and just fellowship of people that can share similar stories of what they've dealt with. It's just a great social atmosphere, but they also do a lot of legislative lobbying for the benefits that the veterans are entitled to, which is a, a great thing. Let's face it, a lot of these problems that our soldiers or servicemen and women come back with, some of them you can see, you know, if someone's losing an arm or a leg or something, you see that, but a lot of the injuries are things you can't see, whether it's, you know, PTSD or other type of mental health issues that are really, really challenging for the readjustment of these soldiers back into life. I know there's a lot of efforts here in the state of Minnesota with Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. And American Legion and the VFW work very closely with them to help with families' integration. Because let's face it, when that family's a part for a one, two, three-year deployment for a typical reservist or National Guardsperson, that adjustment back to family life is very, very difficult. And a lot of times, they need help, whether it's financial or just even counseling on how to reconnect with your marriage and your children and all those important things. Military service is very, very difficult on family life. The single people, they seem to really go out there and enjoy it, but I can tell you in the trenches, in our battles, that a lot of those service members, their number one concern besides doing their job and duty is how is my family doing back home? So, the fact we have better technology now to keep them connected is, is a blessing. But that is something that's really important, that we keep the families connected. One of the things I like to tell people is The American Sniper, great movie, I think.
Excellent.
Yes, very, very, very awesome movie. And my hero in that, besides the wonderful sniper that we had, was his wife and how she kept that family together during the challenges that they had. And God bless her. I was privileged to meet her a year or two ago and just a neat lady that really loves America, loves her child, was proud of her husband and was a great support that he needed through those good times and bad times that they had together in their marriage.
Well, we just have a minute left, so please quickly wrap up with your website again, Alan, and let the people know that you are available to talk to or get in touch with me.
Yes, I'm, sorry, Marcy, I'm very happy to speak to any group that wants to hear about what they can do to become more civically engaged in their, in their local communities. Very, very excited to be here. Very, very excited to be speaking at the American Legion Fall Conference here in a few weeks in Wilmer. And you can find out more information about me at majorduff.com. And the book, once again, is called "Fixing America's Shattered Politics."
Thank you, Alan, for coming in today. This has been a great time talking to you.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you, Alan.